Good evening. Good evening, the board has now returned from closed session and will begin the regular session of the KUSD school district meeting. Four point one, we'll pour out closed session items, we have nothing to report out. Four point two, we have one amendment, we're adding six point one point two. Is anything else to change? Alright, do we have motion to add that one item? I have a first or I have a second? Do you want to give that too? Jimmy got it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, moving on to the flag salute, we'll have Vice President Wes Green.
Everybody please stand. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible,
Thank you, so much better when the kids do it.
Oh, I know. I'll practice.
Alright, moving on to invitation to address the board, we have two items. We have a six point one. It's a letter from Ms. Dawn Powers. Dear KUSD board, we are Chris and Dawn Powers and we want to take this time to thank you for all you do for the schools and the KUSD, including the schools our kids attend at the KTL Char School and Academy. We have been at KTL for ten years and are so grateful for the opportunity for our five children to attend. We started when it was still run by Mrs. Stengel and now Rusty Wayne. We also appreciate when some of you have come to our Call in the Books, uh, Vic to judge the costumes, as well as Are You Smarter Than, uh, Vics as well. Both of us have, both of us have a sibling and their spouse that are teachers in California, so we know the, and appreciate the, that the teachers are concerned about how much work they put into teaching from a distance. We were so excited a couple of weeks ago hearing that our kids would be able to attend at least one day a week and called the school to confirm that. I know it's not what everyone would want, but it would be a step in the right direction. However, in the early afternoon of October twenty eighth, we were so upset to read that KTL was included in the continued shutdown until January fourth. We were so hopeful after watching the school board meeting on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, and hearing that the board would be open to opening the school district up in a limited capacity after the two weeks were over on the COVID waiting period for our county. We were dismayed when that didn't happen, not angry, not belligerent, not device, just dismayed. Two of our children are struggling, if you were to check their previous year's grades and talk to their teachers, you would know, this is so not like them. I don't believe we are the only family that have kids that are struggling. The biggest trouble is they are distracted at home, which is causing them to get behind schoolwork and that is not on Zoom. We are at our wits' end to be parents, breadwinners, and now apparently part-time teachers. What a great way to celebrate KTL's twenty fifth anniversary. I don't know what families do that have only one parent at home and they have to work. Definitely not a good scenario for children's development and positively toxic for their overall educational goals. I know we are just one family, but my hope is if you made your decision about KTL not opening up for one day a week, instruction based on three angry letters from one of our KTL families, that maybe you would change your decision based on another KTL families that's been around a while longer. It sounds like based on that family's letter and your decision, she is going to take her kids elsewhere. We just want you to know that even though we are frustrated with the whole COVID situation in general, we represent more families than you might think and are willing to do what's necessary to have their children go back to school. Even if it's limited capacity to start or even take kids on a case-by-case basis. Our upper, our upper school is only two days a week during non-COVID times already, and we feel that even if these kids could attend one day a week, it would be better than nothing. Our lower school grade five kid could most benefit from this in-person interaction with their teacher due to difficulties and focusing in distant learning situations. Some of our older kids are doing okay, but struggled due to Zoom meetings not being adequate for instructions. We are writing this letter to show our appreciation for what you do for KUSD and especially KTL, and now, and know that there is stress on your shoulders to make decisions for the teachers, staff, and families in each school district. It's hard to please everyone and it's impossible in this situation. We greatly hope that you reconsider allowing KTL to open considering our school layout already has social distance, school schedule, and lower volume of students. Thank you so much, Chris and Dawn Powers, KTL parents since twenty ten. And the next one is from Ms. Elizabeth Purcell. It's my hope that in the last two weeks that have passed, that much work has been done in regards to opening our schools. I have to say that I'm quite disappointed on how the last meeting was handled and organized. I find Jeffrey and Wesley Green's defensive postures to comments that make question their handling of reopening of the schools is slapping the face to parents. The motion that Wesley Green read at the conclusion of the meeting was obviously a pre-written statement and shows that there was no thought or real discussion about opening our schools. No science was ever mentioned, only excuses and talks about what ifs. Leaders make decisions, hard ones, that's why they are leaders. I hope, I hope this and any future boards start acting like one. Finally, since my last comments were always read through a ferocious pace, I, or I, the originator, the parent, a community member would like to address the board in person and attend any future open meetings. Using an executive order N dash twenty-nine dash two O and N dash twenty-five dash two O as excuse for disallowing the community is ridiculous. You can allow members of the community to attend and address the board and you absolutely do have ample space in a thirty-eight hundred square foot cafeteria to add quickly social distance. After speaking to legal counsel, I hereby request an action item be placed on agenda for the next meeting. I'm requesting the board to discuss the allowance of community to attend and come up with a plan for the community to attend the next and future board meetings. This is a small community and we have ample space to do so. You allowed and are allowing presenters here at this meeting, I expect you to do the same with the community. Thank you, Elizabeth Purcell. Alright. I do think we should, uh, put that on the, one of the next future meetings to discuss. Thank you. Moving on to announcements that have been postponed, moving on to recognition, staff reports. Just when you're gonna have them. Okay, that works. So we've read the staff reports, do we have any questions or concerns? Alright, moving on to consent approval agenda items. Action prepared for consent calendar are consistent with adopted improved policies of the district and are deemed routine in nature. They'll be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless number, members of the board request an item be removed from the consent calendar. In that event, it'll be taken up in the order indicated on the main agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? Do we have motion approved, nine point one through nine point four?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Sure. Yeah. Uh, you want us to pause? Okay. We're just taking a quick break, we're start back with action item ten. Alright, back to your regular watch TV. Moving on to ten point one, approval of certified confidential management personal actions. Any questions or concerns? Do we have motion to approve? First or a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, moving on to ten point two, approval of district English learner advisory committee, D-LAC annual recommendations. Mr. Brazil.
Those are, uh, basically that we are, um, English language learners, we have to have an advisory board and this is district, um, advisory board that meets, um, every year, they, by now for the year, they also hold periodic meetings where we have to take minutes and provide it to the school board or to the state school board, um, and the federal agencies,
And the whole thing come crashing down, but in a good way.
Yeah.
In a good way. And, and to be able to adjust and then communicate that to hundreds of people. Huh. That's, that's gonna be the mission, right?
Absolutely.
So as long as you guys have pre-thought that, I have no questions.
All about communication.
Yeah, and some like that. If I know you.
No, and, and Mr. Murray, I'd like to say as, as have all three principals have worked daily with their staffs over and over, we've scratched literally twenty to thirty different plans and I know I said that before, that it's the truth. And we're, we're still hoping that this is as best as we can do. But again, we, we know that conditions can change any of that, that, that we don't want to have something so written in stone that it also prevents us from being successful. So, um, I, I, again, I, I wanna thank all of them for their input. Um, and for really giving an idea of how to invest our kids in these, uh, in an environment that is not what we'd like. I mean, the ideal would be that we could open completely and not talk about it minimum day or a half a day. We open and have everyone here as, as we did in March, uh, before closing. Um, unfortunately, that's not the environment that, that we're finding ourselves in. Uh, again, I just wanna thank them because I think they, I know that I've demanded and, and they have been exhausted since March of producing plan after plan after plan. I think finally tonight, if I think we get some direction, we'll be able to at least share with our parents what it will look like or what we hope it will look like. I think being at home, not knowing how this is going to impact Vegas as families and, and kids and, and parents. I think that's the real issue that we want to communicate and we want to share with them. But I also don't wanna give out false hope. I don't wanna send a schedule that is not realistic and that we don't really think that we can, um, follow or implement. So, uh, I think all of those things have been taken into, into consideration. And I think that those are very, very good questions. So it's absolutely, our job now really is to, to be able to communicate with the parents and share with them that this is what we're doing.
And po- and in, and possibly an ever-changing environment, of course.
Without a doubt, yeah, without a doubt.
Okay.
What's that with the gates? Oh, the gates would open at eight o'clock. How are we going to make sure the kids are not bundled up together in a head?
Uh, we're going to have spots in the old grounds. And in addition to that, there are going to be three gates open instead of just one. Um, so we will have a kind of first grade gate, second, third grade gate, fourth, fifth grade gate. Um, and then we'll be at each one of those gates. Um, uh, the reason why we're trying to limit how much time we have, um, in that ten minutes before school is because I'm gonna take a while for those students to take class. We don't want them rushing out. And it's gonna take, um, quite a bit of effort for us to, uh, keep people, um, from congregating and going directly to class so that we can go off campus in the same, in the same.
After a few days of.
Yes.
They're gonna write the class, trust me.
Yeah. Do you guys have any other questions?
We've also, just to show, we staggered the opening for, um, the elementary and the, um, middle school, uh, to accommodate transportation routes so that we don't have, you know, that the bus run late and the school started for, for some of those kids. So we're, we're working on that as well. And that's one of those things that we think, well, we may have an earlier route than, than we're anticipating, but we, we kinda need to see how many students are actually going to ride the bus, um, before we make any of those. But again, the word flexibility is what we've all kinda grown to, to, to think and, and anticipate.
Okay.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
And then I'd like to ask, I think we'll have Mr. Stewart come up and share his, uh, the schedule for the middle school, which is quite challenging when you look at, it's challenging for elementary, the middle school then you get into and the fact that the charter school is the same. You have, uh, classes that you offer, you wanna offer as, um, classes for enrichment and things. And those are very hard, the records are hard to put in. And yet we have requirements to assure the kids are meeting in order to, to actually be, uh, be promoted from the eighth grade on and move to high school. That only becomes more complicated with practice. So, um, Mr. Stewart, can you share with us?
It's exciting. This, Matt, Chris, and I speak back into, not to have to see you guys on TV, so that's nice. Uh, our, our schedule, uh, we actually looked at a bunch of models, a bunch of middle schools. Uh, and, uh, so we try to take the best from the school. Also, I, I, I do wanna say Matt did a lot of work on, uh, on the elementary school. And we tried to model his, uh, plan also, so we don't have families that have a kid in the name, a kid in the PM or different bus routes, so that's all been taken care of. Uh, the, the couple of differences in ours is that we're actually gonna go to homerooms in the first period. So, um, all of our teachers will have about twenty-eight students assigned to them. Those kids will be both doing remote learning with that teacher and also the, the kids in school will be working on with the teachers, uh, on that curriculum. The, the, the reason that's ideal is there actually is a lot of reasons. The first one is we don't have to do, oh, we're doing the A to B block also. So on Monday, Tuesday will be group A cohort. And then on, on Thursday and Friday, we will be cohort that are gonna be on campus. Uh, having a homeroom like that, we actually don't have to do like a curriculum for, for Monday, Tuesday being the exact same curriculum for Thursday and Friday. So everything progresses forward. Uh, kids will, kids will be in class, in class and remote learning at the same time in the mornings. So there's, so we're all getting, there's not gonna be one curriculum for remote and one curriculum for our kids at school. So that, that, that to me is one of the most important things. So, uh, uh, in terms of help, uh, because there isn't an intervention class in the afternoon, all the kids will be under the same, um, the same, uh, curriculum piece. Uh, so from, and then that, that's every single day. So we'll, we'll be with the kids every single day. On Wednesdays, though, no kids come to school. But in the morning, all students will zoom in in the morning and make sure that they're there, uh, uh, for that piece. But on, on, uh, on, unless you like Monday, uh, we do have, uh, except the homeroom period and, and we also do PE during that time. So Mr. Dudley will have like a ten-minute PE class. And usually what that is is gonna be like a document sent home with the list of exercises that you go right through, calisthenics or something with the kids. Uh, then let's say for math class, we'll do math for the first period. So sixth grade will do math, seventh grade will do math, and the eighth grade will do math. And the teachers are gonna decide who's gonna, like, like in sixth grade, let's say Ms. Loza will be the key math teacher. And then Mr. Hughes and Mr. Ellis's class will zoom in to watch Ms., uh, Loza teach. And, um, so that way we have, again, all the kids are on the same thing and kids are not moving. So in each, in each classroom, if they're assigned to Ms. Loza for the, their, their, for the day with Ms. Loza, but they'll zoom into Mr. Ellis's class, they'll zoom into Mr. Hughes's class, and they'll, they'll zoom into, uh, actually Ms. Loza's class too.
So say Mr. Hughes would then support the classroom that's in front of them while they're on Zoom?
Yes. And, and, and then, uh, so, so if Ms. Loza, I believe they're, they're fifty-four minute class periods. So if she teaches for thirty minutes, the last twenty minutes, uh, Mr. Mr. Ellis and Mr. Hughes will help those kids if they have any questions. But, but Ms. Loza is still the, the lead teacher, so they can ask her questions. They can ask, um, the, this, the, the teacher, your homeroom teacher questions. Or if we have push and support, we'll have that also.
Are all the kids obviously gonna be wearing masks then, I take it, right?
The kids are, the kids are in, any student that comes into, uh, the middle school or anybody that comes into the school has to wear masks.
And do we have a plan i- if the kids are defiant with the masks? Not that they will be, but maybe you get one that just doesn't wanna wear.
Less was a kid once, he knows.
Yeah, well, that's all I'm thinking, John.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll do everything possible to make sure that they understand that's important.
I think what all we can do is we have to strongly encourage it and, and state that that's what we are being asked to do and hopefully be able to communicate with parents that these aren't necessarily things we personally have chosen to implement, but they are here and we need to follow them to be open as a public school. So, um, I, I think that I'm hoping the kids are going to see that they, they too, I, I have faith in especially in middle school kids, that I think they realize what's going on in the world when they heard. They may not know the whole sense of it yet, but I think they know far more than what we're giving them credit for. And I think they will want to be protected. And I think, um, it, it's gonna be an adjustment period because they aren't just gonna come to school. And, and, you know, they're still gonna have to be, what we really wanted was to provide some social aspects so that these kids are just sitting at home in front of a, a, a monitor and not having any interaction when they're here. So what we're hoping is that slowly the kids will begin to develop those relationships and maybe a little bit of distancing of not being able to just get together and hug one another or those things. But I, I, I have nothing but confidence that, that I think both our staff and our students will, will be able to deal with this. And the little ones, we're, we're going to strongly encourage TK to second grade if they too wear, um, masks. But we also are very positive that there may be someone that medically can't, can't do that. I mean, it's, we all have to have a little bit of, um, um, common sense approach to some of this. We, they're kids, they are gonna take them off. They're gonna use them as a.
I, I think that's what I'm driving, yeah.
Their heads, they're, they're gonna do that. And I can just see kindergarten class doing that. Um, to me, that's normal behavior and we just need to, to model that we're, we're trying to not do that. And there's a way to, to properly wear it.
I, I think the students miss the social part so much that they'll wear masks.
They'll wear the mask, yeah.
They wear masks to go to the mall.
Yeah.
They'll wear masks to go to school.
I gotcha.
And if it's really an issue, we still have the remote learning, they don't have, they can do that from their.
I, I think that's what I'm asking, John, yeah.
Uh, but, but, uh, the, the difference too is that at the, at the middle school, we will do, we have two breaks put into the day. So that's a little bit different. And the amount of kids that we'll have, um, that's, that is, um, on campus is, is a lot smaller than what the elementary has to deal with. And we already have like three sections set apart, so that's the sixth grade section, seventh grade section, eighth grade section. There'll be three lunch periods for us, so, uh, excuse me, for the nutrition break. So when, like, the sixth grader go out, they'll have their break, and the seventh grade comes out, and the eighth grade comes out. This schedule here is a little bit more complicated, so the three different schedules. So this is just kinda like the masking schedule. But the sixth grader have different break times, the seventh grader have different break times. But at the end of the day at lunch, at twelve, it's a grab and go, so they'll take their lunch and then they'll, they'll leave. Uh, but they have to come back at one o'clock. So all students at one o'clock have to recheck in with Zoom regardless if they were at campus in the morning or at home. And that's gonna be our intervention time. So all the kids that have questions, they wanna go see this, this, uh, Loza, if they didn't understand a math question, they can go, they can check with their homeroom and then do breakout meetings with her. Uh, so it's, it's really, it's really, uh, uh, again, a time for kids to be there for forty-five minutes with their teacher. And again, the teachers are all online. And then at one forty-five to two fifteen is the prep day for, time for the teachers. But a lot of, a lot of them will still be there online. The kids need to come see them, that's gonna make their phone calls, home with parents, we talk to them. Uh, one of the coolest things that we've found though is if you're Zooming with a kid, hey, go get your mom and you can talk to her. So a lot of the communication that we're, the teachers do is actually face-to-face instead of having to be on the phone and call somebody. So that's, uh, that's kinda one of the things that we've been using as communication tools with that also. And then again, on, on Thursday, the kids that were at school or at home, the ones that, that are now coming in is a whole different cohort group. But again, they're with their homeroom teachers, we don't switch classes. Uh, we, we can't, um, we can't have a kid, uh, go, you know, be in Mr. Ellis's class one day and move to another cohort if they have to stay with that teacher the whole time. Uh, and then I'm not really sure how, what after-school program's gonna look like. But, I mean, I think that's a lot of things where, you know, that I think the question is asked, where do those kids go after school? We'll still have an after-school program, I'm not really sure. I don't know if we've decided if, if we could have like twelve after-school weeks, kids go home. Or we'll do it till two fifteen, but that's, that's one of the options, I think, for what we do with kids after twelve. And they can still do that in that classroom because we'll have, I, uh, we'll have ample computers that we just thought are part of. New ones might become major soon, so with that, but, uh, that's kinda it. Like you said, we mirror, mirror Matt's schedule pretty well, so the kids will be on the same schedules and.
So will the middle school students have to bring their laptops or Chromebooks to school with them every day?
Uh.
And charge them and all that responsibility?
We, uh, we did order a big bulk of Chromebooks coming, so I'll have a surplus. So, um, my goal would be that they have their homeroom and they use one in school. But, um, we did get cases for them, so I would say right now, if they come into school every day with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the expectation is we purchased cases so that the students could transport them back and forth. And, um, if they need, we, our hope is that we will have enough units. However, the problem is that most of this technology is backordered. And so it's very tough to say that we're going to start out with, we know that every single person has a device at this point. So there's no question about that. But if we can move to where we can say, okay, keep a unit at home and one here, and that's our hope. However, that, that may not happen, uh, as we start. So I, I just wanted to be clear about that, that what we are going to start from day one is to ask that they do transport back and forth every day.
Sorry, guys.
And I.
What about, uh, Mr. Murray? What are those kids, are they gonna be bringing, maybe they'll afford the fifth pair, bring in their Chromebooks or?
They certainly could. Um, but some teachers may be doing things, um, with their kids in class with paper and pencil.
Yeah.
So, um, and, and I think that, um, paper and pencil, especially for younger grades, is very important.
Yeah.
Um, and since, uh, the lessons that are being done in person in the morning will be very similar, if not identical, to what's being offered in the afternoon, um, so that all students are getting that, um, that small, um, small instruction.
Yeah.
Small group instruction with their teachers. Um, that teacher may be sending out more, more papers with the students than the teacher.
Sorry, I wanted to steal your show.
And also with that is, uh, the kids won't, won't share Chromebooks.
Yeah.
So since they're only in one class, they'll, they won't use that extra Chromebook. Because my other concern would be is, is, okay, so they pick it home, they play games flashmack, and they come to school, they got twenty minutes of charging time left.
Yeah.
So at least this way, we'll, we'll have, we'll have some computers or, or the extra ones charged up ready to go in case a student has, has an issue with it or, or, or out of, out of gas line.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, anything else or questions?
Well, I, I, I just have one thing. So it sounds like a great plan. Do we have a plan for, let's say, two teachers come down with COVID?
I'm glad you asked that.
What's that?
Because, because the way that, since, since we are doing, like, you know, it's called Star Teachers. So I have one land, a dark teacher for sixth grade. If, if a cohort, if, if somebody does get sick.
Yes.
That group gets quarantined. I don't have, because, because we're not switching at all, it's only that, that fourteen kids and a teacher.
We've isolated and, I gotcha, okay.
So those will, you know, if the teachers, if the teachers are paying the remote from home, the kids, all kids will be in that, in that teacher's home will be, be quarantined for whatever amount of time that we need to do that. And then we're, we're.
I hope you don't mind me asking that, John. I mean, but, but it's important to me to understand that in every plan, things go awry and, and I'd, I'd love to know how that's addressed, so.
Well, the safety has been the number one thing for all of us. And so that was our biggest concern is what happens? We, we know about it if there's an outbreak. What happens if all of a sudden, like Matt said, if there's an outbreak in the school and that school has to be closed down, we're all closed down. And so what will happen is, is that then, you know, we just go to remote learning, we're fine. Nothing changes in our schedule except that we don't do it from school.
Gotcha.
As soon as the quarantine's lifted, everybody comes back. And then like I said, the most of the, and if one kid is sick in that one group, then we can, we can isolate that, that, that group there. So, yeah, it's been, it's been well-covered. And I know Mr. Brazil and, and Eric Wors have been working on making sure we have all the, the bells and whistles for making sure our rooms are clean, procedures in place, and all that stuff's done too.
So it's safe to say that we have put in many, many hours in coming up with the best plan?
There's been a lot of one-off questions.
Yeah.
And, you know, some of them, some of them we kinda go, oh, that's not, you know, not a huge issue. But some of them go, oh, my gosh, we forgot about that. So we've had, you know, we've had tons of discussions about that. Uh, I know there's been three or four committees that, that are, are all kinda working on the same thing, so it's not just one group. There's a lot, there's been a lot of input into what this looks like.
Sure, I just wanna make sure that's articulated also to the public about how many hours that we've invested into this to, to ensure safety for the staff and for the children. So I think that was my big concern.
Yeah. And then I, I do wanna just address one more thing. Uh, we do have, for our start time is seven forty-five. We have a supervision at seven o'clock in the morning. And our, our, we might have a hundred and twenty, the most we might have on campus, not, not either at the same time. But, but from seven, from seven o'clock till the kids come in, there's, there's person there. And then, uh, we start at seven forty-five, and then I'm there at seven thirty, and the back too. So we have lots of supervision to make sure. And we also have the, the little things ordered for, you know, for distance and things like that.
I've always said open the school earlier, but with this situation, we probably don't wanna open it earlier. We wanna.
Right.
Very few kids on campus the, the least time.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I, I, you know, I truly believe too that our, our staff will be there right around seven thirty when we open the doors.
Yeah.
And those kids are not gonna be able to mingle, they're gonna have to go into their designated areas. So we have that all, all just done, we talked to.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions?
I have none.
I think you.
Thanks, John.
Now, I'll ask the Mr. Winn compartment. I wanna say that, uh, Mr. Winn has been, uh, he's, he has a very good talent. And that is for organizing schedules and putting those visuals together. And so he has been kind enough to share with, with both, uh, Mr. uh, uh, Murray and with, with Mr. Stewart and myself, some of those, uh, uh, that really have been complicated things look much easier to follow and, and to look at, so I, I thank him for that. And you guys made, I don't know how many plans or, or had to spread, how many.
Yeah, and our plans are, become my second nature now. And I appreciate that because it is difficult to try to make sense of everything that we're trying to do and make it visual. Uh, to begin with, I think I just wanna start out because there's probably a number of people that are watching that don't know what the charter school is. Um, Key's Learning Charter School is a school that's made up of actually four programs. Three academies made up of four programs. And so when you hear, like, the first one we're talking about is a blended academy, that is our independent study model. And there's no schedule, you will see in the plans, there's no schedule for that because those students are scheduled individually by an advisor. And they come on campus, well, they're not on campus now, they are scheduled Zoom. But those who choose to come on campus will then have a schedule to come on campus and meet with the advisor. Those who choose not to will continue with the, uh, distance learning model. So that's the simplest one and, uh, to explain. The second, um, academy we have is Core Academy. And that is, um, our kindergarten through sixth grade program. And this program is, uh, because we're an independent, non-classroom-based charter school, can have no more contact time than three and a half days. So filling out a schedule with three and a half days, trying to get as much time in, has been difficult. Um, I, I appreciate, uh, Dr. Brazil having us meet with Julie Frankenstein, I believe is her name, Falkenstein. Oh, I'm, I'm, I knew it was gonna be there.
You're close enough.
Okay.
Exactly, that's why she gets that.
Yeah, and I appreciate her going through their plans. And so I know that when we did a survey, we had a one-day model for students to come back. And when they, when this schedule has been altered substantially because of, uh, looking at how, uh, we can meet the needs of our students and, uh, and also meet the requirements that the county health, uh, officials, uh, have for us. So what we have is, uh, you look at the calendar, you will see that we have split our grades. Our cohorts are by grade, so kindergarten has a cohort A and a cohort B. And we will start school at eight thirty, and these students will come, um, for half a day. They'll come until twelve fifteen. Uh, they will come two days a week. So cohort A will be on Mondays and Wednesdays. And cohort, uh, I mean, A on Mondays and, you know, Wednesdays. Cohort B is Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that, uh, even though that doesn't sound like a lot of time, it, when we matched it up with the, the schedule we had prior, that was a one-day schedule, this actually, these half-days provide actually more contact time, um, by minutes. So we have that going from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday is our independent study. Uh, uh, just like we usually, we do now. Um, what we also will have is that for those students who are staying home, um, they will be in the afternoon from one to three thirty is our distance learning time. So we have the contact time with the students in the morning and then afternoons with the distance learning. We also will, uh, continue because of those distance learning students with our every other week, uh, exchange. I think it's important that the students get the paper materials and follow along so that, because that would be the same materials that the students in the classroom will be using. And so that will continue. We see the break times listed there and, uh, keep everyone separated. But also, this half-day allows us is that we will, uh, still be able to provide lunches, but lunches will not be consumed on campus. They will take their lunches off-campus with them when they leave. So that way we don't, you know, we don't have to worry about cohorts mixing and all of that. So that's our K six, uh, three and a half day program. Then we have an, our third academy is Key Academy. And Key Academy is made up of our seventh grade program, junior high, and our high school program. So I'm gonna skip to the junior high program, which is a very simple grid. It, it's also follows in, along with our K six program. In the sense that we have split the cohorts, we're direct by grades. Um, so you have a seventh grade A group and a seventh grade B group, and an eighth grade A and an eighth grade B. They will also be staying for half a day, so at eight thirty to twelve o'clock. And in the afternoon, which is not located or identified on here, will also be the Zoom times for those students that choose not to come back. The asynchronous learning on Fridays is set up because our junior high program schedules, our regular schedules intermingled with our high school. And let me explain. Uh, my seventh grade teacher and my eighth grade teacher both teach electives at the high school level. That, they do that because their students go to the high school science teacher for science. So while that science, seventh grade's with the science teacher, that, uh, seventh grade teacher is teaching a high school elective. And then we also have an elective wheel that the junior high has so they can have some enrichment programs that includes the high school art teacher. So trying to keep that, those programs intact, we added, we put the asynchronous learning on Fridays. So the science teacher will be, um, having to produce videos of an instruction as well as the art teacher for the enrichment. And then they'll schedule them for Fridays for students to go in, watch those, and do the work that's associated with that.
I have a question. So I'm saying Monday, what is, uh, eight A doing, uh, on Monday morning? Are they doing home lessons? Are they home Zooms, independent work?
Uh, excuse me, you're talking about cohort seven A or eight A?
What is eight A doing on a Monday?
Yeah, they will have, there's, they, they will Zoom along with this, but they also will have additional work to do.
Gotcha.
Now, um, it's just a, a question brought up to mind, just so you see that, and when you got the seventh A with Barlow.
Yeah.
Ms. Barlow is our English teacher and our social studies teacher for both seventh and eighth grade. So that's why you have the cohorts mixing.
That's why it's switched.
With the teacher flipping every, you know.
They're all getting the same education.
On Mondays, they'll be with her. On Wednesdays, they will be with Miss Virtue who's math and technology. Okay?
So it's like doing double.
Right, right. They're, they're not, they're not mixing, but they're, they're able to do that. And Julie was fine with that happening on separate days.
So Ms. Barlow would teach a whole week full of lessons for her subjects. And then on Wednesday, Virtue would teach her whole week.
Yes, very good. Okay, now we're gonna go to the most complicated.
Looks it.
And this came about, um, we, our, our original intent was our high school's so small, we can just be its own cohort. Well, that was not, um, looked upon fondly. So we then looked at, actually, we were instructed to look at, uh, block scheduling. So I sat down and did a block schedule and it was just, we're just too small. We don't, our teachers teach everything, all right? Those teachers teaches all English periods. So the block schedule that time is just very difficult to do. So what I did, um, on this is I looked at it from cohorts again and I split them up into cohorts by, by grade levels. So the seniors are a cohort. Our sophomore class is actually quite large. So in order to keep the cohort within the fourteen to sixteen student range, we had to separate the sophomore class. You can see them in yellow there. We separate, or we have a cohort of our juniors and a cohort of our freshmen. What this, I'm just gonna use one example to show how this works. So if you look at the, the seniors, they're, they're with, uh, our art teacher, actually. So first period, her, all of the seniors will be taking government and econ, which is actually taught by Mrs. Harmon. So they will be sitting in that classroom, watching a Zoom with Mrs. Harmon who's in another room, while Mrs. Doherty here is teaching art two to the sophomores who are in a different room and she's Zooming with them. The only reason, the only way we could make this work is to keep kids safe. So the cohort stayed intact and we didn't mix teachers, didn't mix this, so, uh, mix, um, teachers or students around. So we're able to have to do it this way. So really, you're in class Zooming except for the period that you will have this teacher. Um, so you will have, there'll be an art student with the art teacher at some point in time watching live the Zoom classes happening.
Do you think there's going to be any issue with the art teacher teaching an art lesson while everybody's trying to watch their Zooms of history?
They will have earphones, they will be sitting, separate, you see, there's multiple classes in some of these. So they'll be sitting in their groups with earphones on, doing the class. So yeah, it's not, this is not.
I think it's the best option to not.
Yeah, it's, it's not perfect. I looked at every option, I, Julie gave me some ideas, I went back and played with them, came back and just could not, this is the best. So it's important, I thought, for the high school students to, if they choose to come back, to be able to come back. And if you notice, this starts at eight-thirty and goes to one-thirty. I provided some time in the afternoons for those teachers who have to prepare their lessons in the asynchronous classes. But I also wanted the students to have lunch on campus. So the eighth grade, I did not say this, but the eighth grade is like the elementary, they will have a lunch if they choose to, but they'll take it off-campus. The high school, I've had them stay on campus, they're staying in their room, the cohort, but then we will bring the lunch to them or they will have their own lunch. So they can socially.
That's a huge social part.
They can sit with their peer group and have conversations for that thirty-minute period of time and see each other. And I thought that was extremely important.
I agree.
As well as they're going to be together, they're just not going to be in the class, doing the same classes together. Again, this was.
So the cohorts will eat together in their homeroom classes?
They'll stay in those classrooms that will be.
No, I think the lunch is really important for them.
Yeah, I agree. So, so anyway, there you go. That's, that's what we have. So I see a thumbs up, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rusty. I'd like to share that the whole issue with even lunches became something that we had to kind of overcome because of limited staffing to be able to provide both in-person and not to have the lunches all prepared. And we don't have a central kitchen, so everything is brought in from Turlock who provides us with our food. So we had to include the cafeteria, obviously, it's an expectation on all of our conversations. And we feel again that we have a system now, but it doesn't mean that the system won't break down either at some point. We, we are, again, I want to thank Rusty for having had to revise and revise and revise. And again, it was not because we wanted to make it difficult or I wanted to make it difficult, it was because this is what we're being asked to do. I also want to share with everybody that, you know, larger districts have personnel to do, they have so many more people that are able to help and support. Getting plans and getting, putting the plates. We're small and we have all but even campus hours and we bump heads. We have worked extremely hard and I, again, if there is another thing that we didn't see and we see it once we open, then we will, we will seek that. And I want to thank all of the staff who, you know, we're all worried. And we want our staff and our students to be safe. And I, I really do thank my administrators for having kept that at the forefront. And we've had some rough conversations, but that's, that's part of being a leader. And I know that we're being criticized for not being, I would, I would love for some people to someday step in some of our shoes as we sit in meetings and try to do what is best. And not what is best for one student, but what is best for every single student in our district, whether they're in the charter or they're in our regular district. That is why I'm in education, I want to educate and provide safety for students. That has been number one from day one, and it will continue to be. So again, I just, I wanted to thank my staff because they well deserve it. They have done an amazing job and will continue to do so. And I don't like to be painted as someone who hasn't done anything to do because we have. So I'll, I'll leave that alone as my, that's my public comment.
Alright.
Yeah, Jeff.
Now, are you going to have any qualms with the parents with the hours?
With the what?
With the hours of the.
Actually, I was just going to mention that before I walked away, so my parents understand. We sweated over the schedules knowing that my, our families travel, they bring their students and they choose to come to us. And a half-day program means that they're going to come in, drop their kids off for four hours and then come back. Or some of them travel long distance. So yes, it's going to have an impact on families. I just didn't know how to get around it with Julie giving us pointers and direction. It just kept going back to the half-day, the lunches are a problem. There's just so many different issues that, that if, you know, if someone does get COVID, that didn't wipe out. We just all go back instead of here breaking it into smaller groups, keeping the lunches and, who they take them home, or isolated into a classroom. So, you know, just looking at all the angles and trying to make it work. And I know that, I know that families are going to be, there's going to be some unhappy, there's going to be some that are going to be okay with that. Some are going to be impacted, they're working, they, how are they going to have somebody in the afternoon to watch their child? Yeah, we took that all into consideration and did the best we can. Our hope is down the road that this will go away and we can go right back into full opening. I know that Elliot's heard me say this a couple of times, but I think we say reopening and immediately people think, boom, my kid's going to be back at school. That is not right now, we are having to go in through the county guidelines and the state guidelines. And they are going back and telling us. Now, I know there are districts doing different things and I think they're doing them on their own, or I don't know how they're doing it. Because I know that we're following the guidelines and with their guidance, we have to do it the way that we have listed out.
Well, they got an option that they don't want to do that, the state isn't there.
Oh yeah, no, they could say this will be going out probably shortly with district guidance. So we know who want, who exactly is going to come back and who exactly will not be coming back. We need to know that because it's going to be really important for us to establish, and we're running out of time. January fourth is just around the corner, so we need to get, I need to get all this stuff in play so we know exactly how many kids we have. We may have, not that we, our surveys showed that we could have up to seventy percent. But there's masks involved, people may not want their child to wear masks, there's other things that have come in that were back, the purple, they may not, they may consider that. And now it's a half-day, they may not want that schedule. So it may be less than that, or maybe all of a sudden, we have a ton of people wanting to come back. But we need to know that pretty soon, so that information will be gathered shortly. Yes, we all. Any other questions?
If I could just, you know, share that, you know, the city districts have opened, not all, but, and I'm not saying it for the state of argument. I'm simply saying that we have all opened, or they've opened in very modified ways. There are, if there are one or two schools who are very small that are able to go all day every day, I understand that. And that's by size, I was a superintendent principal and I cooked lunches and did drive the bus because I can hardly drive a car. But I will say that those places are very different because they are smaller. When you have fewer kids, it's much easier to space them out and to do all that. So again, every district is a little different, they've all implemented sound only to provide access for students with special needs, English language learners. So there is a variety of schedules across this county and across the state is even more crazy. But across the county alone, so imagine that we're trying to fit a plan that fits our needs and our kids. And we're, we're unique as every other district is as well.
Alright, any questions for this one?
Mr. Nguyen, would, would it be safe to say that we've struggled through this? Would it be safe to say that? So I, what I want.
I'm not going to use the word safe to say.
Right.
I would boldly say this has been a nightmare.
Okay, so, you know, I was sitting here just kind of listening to you and I thought, this is what a phrase I would coin. I said, we are willing, and I mean willing. And that's, I want to make sure that this is heard, we are willing to endure the struggle. And that's, that's what we are, that's what all of us are, we're willing to endure this struggle. And I, I think that the public needs to hear that, that we are willing to endure this struggle.
I know that Dr. Brazil does cruises, but this is not the cruise I signed up for.
There you go.
And none of us, students, the parents, none of us. And so, but we're going to make the best of it.
That's right.
And we're going to, we're going to open. And yes, this schedule may not be perfect and may be able to alter it and tweak it as we go along. But for right now, this is what we've taken to you and this is what we've taken to the county for approval. I, I have no qualms that the county's going to approve it. They're the ones that gave me, gave us the guidance. So I don't have any issue with Julie approving, not approving, so.
Right.
But again, the devil's in the details. So once we get this approval, now we've got to get, got to put all the pieces in play. And I appreciate Dr. Brazil having those meetings so we can all hear what's out there that needs to happen.
Sure.
Because there's a lot that still needs to be put in place so we can safely start and get those kids that want to come back and can't come back into our classrooms.
I'd just like to add for all three of those plans, I've told Mr. Brazil the whole time, I don't think, the community wants half-days, needs a half-days and all that. But I, they've also said that they want their child in Zoom every day. And I think you guys' plans for the half-day and Zoom, really, really listened to the community and found the best way. And so I've always told them, I'm not going to support a half-day plan, but I do support the plan you guys made. Because you put the children first and you make sure that they're in front of a teacher every single day, except for your Fridays, which, that's normal. But I, I really think that the families were hurt and I really appreciate that, all that, and the board was hurt by putting that plan together. And I appreciate that every student's going to see a teacher every day or a staff member. So that's a good, solid plan.
You know, I just want to say, I've heard all three of you and you guys put in so much time to come up with these plans. Thanks for that. And we all know these are very difficult times. So there is no perfect plan, but good thing is, there is a plan for those plan to work. And there's always room for improvement and you are going to see what fits in, what doesn't. And that's how you make plan better. It's day by day, it's a process. And when you go through that process, you know, you will see what is working, what is not working. I mean, this is different times for everyone. I mean, I never thought in my life, you know, thirty years with government, that staff will be working remotely. But guess what? And since March to now, the plan, you know, a lot of improvements. And now there is close to a perfect plan, that is working for everyone. But it does take time. And when you start working on that plan, you are going to get close to perfection. And that, it's time, you know, so it's a, it's a learning process. But I know, you know, that the plans you got, it's going to work because you put in so much time. As Eliu said, you know, all of us, we have so much faith and we have so much confidence in all of you, you know, that it is going to work. So my, you know, advice, my suggestion, move forward with your plans. Let's put it to work and then we'll, you know, make it, make it better, make it better.
It's good to be at this place, you know, to be able to start moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
I agree with you, you guys did a lot of good work, it's a good plan. I know you've worked a long time together.
And I can say most of these plans were already started back in March, while serving lunches with Mr. Murray. And he's telling me all these plans and I'm telling him it's too early to plan. These are, these are plans that have already been in concept since March.
But that's the willingness that I talk about, yeah.
But I was like, don't tell me these plans yet, we're not ready. But I, I heard them and I listened to them. And I know you guys developed them and I, and I, and I know this is a lot different than your original plan. But I know you listened to the families and the colleagues and the staff and there is no perfect plan. But this is an amazing plan and I support it.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion to approve?
No.
Do you have a motion to support the plans? Do we have a second? Did you get who first? Because they both first, I'll give this one to.
And just for the public to clarify, I want to make sure that people understand that what we are applying is a real new plan. But being with it as well will be, will count as a waiver. Should that be what we revert to, I'm not going to, I've heard rumors today to be honest, I don't know whether we're clearly back on purple or not. I don't know fully what that will entail. But again, that's the other caveat that I want to share is, pending whatever happens between now and January fourth, much of it is beyond our control. And so this is the plan, this is what we'll proceed with. But that doesn't mean that we won't have some hiccups along the way or there won't be some challenges. So I just want to be upfront with not only people at home, but also obviously with everyone here as well.
So we have a first, we have a second, Mr. Remins, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Good job, guys. Moving on to eleven point one, COVID coronavirus update.
I fully update is I think that the data has apparently shown that in these last two weeks, our case identification has increased. But still the number of infections is continuing to increase by the day. So we will continue to monitor that and do everything we can to address the needs of cases and to open as safely and as appropriately as possible.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, superintendent report.
I think I, my report truly is that we finally feel like we have not only a direction, but now we can hopefully share with parents what is our plan. And not only just the plan, but we also want to share exactly what it entails. Because again, many other districts when you hear, oh, they opened, well, if they didn't reopen, any different than maybe some of us are doing. And so I want to, the biggest part will be communicating to our parents that this is what it will look like. And it's not, and again, none of us have lived through it, so we're living through it and experiencing it for the first time. But I am fully confident that my staff and, and the families of this district will be as supportive as they can be. And we will get through this as we were talking about, I just hope it's a lot sooner than later. But again, that's some of the things we can't control. So again, I want to thank everyone who has been part of that committee, the opening committee. People put in, you know, late afternoon meetings, early meetings. We, I've probably done more Zooming than I ever, ever wanted to do in my entire life. But that's just the times that we're living in. So that's really, I want to see kids, if I'm going to be able to go into a classroom and see instruction, then that will hopefully happen.
Alright, moving on to board member comments, Mr. Remins.
I'd like to thank everybody for all your hard work for making this plan come through. I'm sure it'll be approved and we've got to take it in.
Alright, Mr. Green.
Let's see, I probably just mainly want to thank, you know, all the staff. But since they're here, you know, Matt, Rusty, John, you guys, from the heart, thank you very, very much for all that effort. And I hope tonight that you understand when I said your willingness, because that, that, that's what it's about. It's your guys' willingness to go through this struggle. It's kind of counterintuitive, you know, to, to struggle and you're willing to do that? That's what sets us apart, I think, that's what sets you apart. So I want to thank you publicly for that, thank you very much so. And all that helped you get there. And I think that's good to know.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Guello.
Well, again, thanks to all of you for all the good work. And then the news, you all know elections are over and I am not re-elected. I want to thank all of you for all the good work you do. And thanks to board members, superintendent, your management team, and I enjoyed working with all of you. And, you know, that's how life is, everything comes to an end. That's how elections are, someone is going to win, someone is going to lose, and it's not a, it's not a, it's not a bad thing. So the new board member, you know, I, I strongly believe he will do a good job and he's elected. He will have my hundred percent support. I will do whatever it takes. So, you know, I will be still around, I will not be sitting here with you. But as a community member, I will be still around, anything I can do to help this board. I have very high respect for this board and I have very high respect for you, Eliu, for all the administrators. So I will be still around. You know, anything I can do to help, I will be always there. And, but my goal will be, you know, to help Mike, I know him, but I want him to succeed. I honestly want him to succeed. You know, that's how everyone get in, everyone gets started. I remember in nineteen ninety-one, when I was appointed to Modestosity Equal Opportunity Commission, it's almost thirty years. Time goes by so quick and, you know, I. And, uh, you know, I see, you know, change is always, uh, change is always good. And, uh, change, uh, always helps. So that's, you know, uh, what I am looking at. If any one of you know Mike, uh, tell him that I said, uh, congratulations and I said, hey, uh, I wish him, uh, all the best. But, uh, tell him to do a good job. If not, then after four years, I'm going to come back and, uh, I'll fix that. So, but if he does a good job, you know, I will vote for him. And I honestly want him, uh, uh, to succeed. So, uh, to end this up, uh, as I said, it's not a bad thing. It's a good thing. Uh, you know, you will have someone, uh, who's younger than me, but not, uh, handsome than me.
I think you do know this guy.
I think I met him one time. But again, whether I met him or not, uh, I want him to succeed. Uh, but again, I am just phone call away, uh, from any one of you, you know? Uh, I enjoy this. Honestly, I enjoy this. You know, in the last thirty years, I've been on many, uh, commissions. I've been appointed, I, I've been elected, I lost elections. I ran for state assembly. I was endorsed by California Democratic Party. I was endorsed by California Labor Federation. So been there, done this. Uh, but you don't win all the time. Uh, and I honestly believe, uh, Mike worked hard. He worked harder than me and I did not. And, uh, so whoever works hard, they supposed to win. And, uh, and he won. So that's how it is. It's a small community. We are all, uh, you know, members of this community and, uh, uh, you know, time to move on. But again, you know, everyone, good job. Uh, keep up your good work. And, uh, you guys will be having these school board meetings. I will be sitting home and having glass of wine and I will think about you then. But again, good job, everyone. Uh, thank you for, uh, thank you for this, uh, uh, good opportunity.
We'll see you next month.
I will be here next month.
Yes.
And I will be here after that too.
Alright. Alright, thank you. Mr. Green? Alright, I have a whole list of stuff. But first I have to start, I wasn't gonna mention Herder's election, but he brought it up. We've had our differences in the time, you know that. Uh, when Herder moved to the community, he jumped right in and he served on the water district, the KES MAC, the school board. He's actually been on our school board. Uh, he likes our school board better though.
He does.
Uh, I just wanna say you've always been a sound vote. You've always voted your way. We haven't always agreed. But you've always really helped with the financial parts, um, being on the board. And, uh, appreciate all your effort you give us. I wanna remind the families that when you guys are making decisions for your household, for your one, two, three, four, five, six kids, and you think the way you think that school's safe, the school's not safe. The board up here, the administrators, the district office staff, your superintendent, we have eleven hundred kids. And we're making decisions on eleven hundred students. We're not making a decision on just who's in our house. And so some of these decisions, again, like I say, aren't what we believe for our personal houses. And what we do in our personal lives isn't what we're gonna do with eleven hundred students. And so when we get letters saying it's my, my two kids, my three kids, it's totally safe for them to go to school. It might be, but we're looking at eleven hundred kids, special need kids, busing, lunches. Like there's a whole bunch of things that go into running schools with eleven hundred students. And as you saw with the principals giving off their reports, they've been losing sleep over how to make a schedule. It's, it's not just opening school and driving a bus around and picking up kids and starting school. The maintenance staff has to be involved. The nurse has to be involved. The county health now has to be involved in every decision we make. And please, when you, when you sit here and critique us or think what we do is wrong, and it might be wrong. We, we're learning this just as everybody else is. We're putting eleven hundred students before ourselves, not what's in your household. So please think about that when what is right for your family is not right for the next family. And we get that. But we have to put eleven hundred students and their families and all our staff in this situation. And I believe this board has made every sound decision, responsibility for eleven hundred students and our staff and their families. I wanna thank the reopening, uh, committee, uh, for all the hard work. I'm sure it's not fun to be on the Zoom meetings. I'm sure you guys wanna be in person and figure this stuff out. Uh, I wanna especially thank, uh, Mr. Brazil for bringing in the county health for helping with the decision so that you guys aren't making plans that aren't gonna work. Uh, I do wanna, uh, again, say I'm not, I don't, I don't support the half-days, but I do support the plan you guys came up with. It's, it's, it makes sense. And, uh, I appreciate that, all the effort you guys put into the community. Uh, I'd like to thank all the admin and I'd like, especially like to thank, uh, Mr. Brazil and the DO staff for all your work you guys have done. You guys are all wearing different hats now. Uh, pretty much the phone rings, you guys do whatever it takes. This is crazy times. We will make it through. This board wants the schools open. We want it safe. You've heard from the admin, they have plans. Let's just hope we can stick with them and, and open up safely. Um, I think that's it. So we'll go to the next board meeting. It will be December eighth. Closed session will be at five thirty, regular session will be at six. Do you have a motion to adjourn at seven sixteen?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for watching.